Good evening. Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting of Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017, 7:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bishop.
President.
Ms. DuVall.
President.
Mr. Lozal.
Present.
Dr. Page.
Present.
Ms. Peliquin.
Excused.
Ms. Ryan.
Present.
Mr. Thomo.
Present.
Six present, one excused.
Thank you. Could we all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag? At this time, is there anybody from the audience that would like to come forward and address the Southbridge School Committee this evening? Once again, is there anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and address the school committee? If seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four, Discussion of Minutes of our September 12th, 2017 meeting. Any corrections, additions, deletions? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Five, Old Business, Field Trip Update.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Two updates for tonight. First, I'd like to welcome Kathleen Catarat, our esteemed principal of the West Street School, who will come before the podium tonight to tell us about an opportunity to have fifth grade students, I do believe, go to Nature's Classroom. And Ms. Catarat has done a tremendous amount of work to organize this and to help support our students so that financially it's very possible for us to take our students to be able to attend this field trip. And I'm really pleased for her to be here tonight to share with you this exciting opportunity for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Welcome, Ms. Catarat.
In front of you, you have a proposal that is being presented to the committee on behalf of the fifth grade at West and Charlton Street Schools. The Nature's Classroom program was founded in 1972 by Dr. John G. Santos. Nature's Classroom is a private nonprofit organization that provides educational programs to schools throughout the Northeast. Currently, Nature's Classroom operates 14 different residential facilities in New England, and there is a Nature's Classroom located in Charlton, our neighboring town. Over the past several years, Mr. Santos has worked with teachers from the elementary schools and offered them the day program at no cost. Typically, in the past, with permission, we've had the opportunity to go to the Nature's Classroom for the day. Mr. Santos met with myself and our fifth grade team a few weeks ago. I want to give credit where credit is due. Ms. Stacy Chaucie-Hayes, one of our fifth grade teachers, has a connection with Mr. Santos, who has, in the past, offered the free day trips. We sat with him a few weeks ago, and he shared the full details of the program and explained how students from inner cities and other places go and spend days and weeks. So we asked him if he would be able to provide us with an overnight opportunity. The proposal that we have in front of you, you have the overview of Nature's Classroom. You also have a sample basic schedule and a sample special interest programming. We are asking if we could go for one overnight, since this would be our first time, for fifth graders. We were able to talk to him about a cost. If we go in the fall, it's cheaper than the spring, and he is offering this to the students for $40 for the night. And we're hoping to ask students through permission slips and funded by parents if we can offer this trip to our students this fall. So West Street has chosen a date for late October. We've submitted the proposal to the Charlton Street Administration. I think they would have to go on a different night, but the same deal applies for both buildings, so that all fifth graders would have the opportunity to experience this environmentally, you know, charged program, but also get an experience of an overnight that our students deserve.
Great. So as we've done in the past, really glad to bring an idea like this before the committee. And, Mr. Bishop, I'll turn it to you then to...
First of all, are any members from any, any questions from any committee members? Ms. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. My question is, you said there was a cost to the students, for the parents, of $40. What about those families who are financially strapped and can't afford $40 for the students to go, for the children to go?
Absolutely. So we talked to Mr. Santos. Just to give you some background, typically, it's $135 per night for the cost. He cut the cost to 80. We expressed to him that we were concerned that students would be struggling to pay that, and he cut it down to 40. What we are planning on doing is asking parents to pay the $40, and then any students that cannot afford to cover the cost would be covered through student activities fee funding that we have in our budget or fundraisers. And we are planning on asking the PTA to pay for the buses, which they usually do.
Good. Thank you.
Dr. Page?
Yeah, one question. So how is the, is this going to occur during the regular school year?
Yes. So it would, the, the programs actually follow the standards for science, technology, engineering. So it is, it will be counted as a school day. The date that we're looking at happens to be a Monday. So students would come to school, they would take attendance and get breakfast in the classroom. Mr. Santos is also providing for that $40, not only the use of the facilities and a fully staffed program, but also snack, lunch, dinner, breakfast the next morning. And I'm not sure about the lunch, whether we'll be there or not, but they'll be providing that for us. So we will be going from school on a Monday morning, spending the night, and then returning back to school in time for buses Tuesday afternoon.
Okay. Thank you. One comment, comment, I'd actually make a comment that I think this is absolutely a fantastic experience, and I think that the district should move towards having more of this kind of activity for our students. I particularly, in particular, myself, I spent a week at a camp like this, in the woods, in a cabin with four or five students and a chaperone that was probably a, I don't know, high school senior, I don't know how they did it or whatever at that time. And it was absolutely wonderful, and I think this is really a great thing that, that in particular, our students could benefit from, from a lot of areas of sort of the pedagogical sort of avenues and so forth. So I think this is a good start, but I would like to see us sort of expand these kind of programming more into the future. So I'm in full support.
Thank you.
Mr. Thomo.
Yeah, thank you. Once this is completed, could you, or someone from the school, just give us a follow-up report on how it went?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you. And we are looking for chaperones if anyone on the committee is interested. Just to let you know that we did work it out with our faculty, that we do have some teachers who were willing and able to spend the night and others that may have small children. So it was, the faculty decided that, obviously, the fifth grade teachers will be there during the day, and any teachers who are, who wish to spend the evening are welcome, and those that just can't for whatever reason will just meet the students on the second day of work there at the site in Charlton. And there will always be an administrator, myself or Ms. Murray from West Street, there for the evening, and also we're recruiting our school adjustment counselors. So there will be not only the full staff of the Nature's Classroom program, but also representation overnight from our buildings.
You said in October, you didn't give a date.
So we wanted to get approval first. So we have submitted through the district the standard request for approval for a field trip. We have penciled in a date for October 30th. We didn't want to do Halloween in the woods. And there were other dates available, like I said, that if Charlton Street opts in, then they can pick another date and work it out with Mr. Santos themselves if they wanted to take advantage of this opportunity.
And how many students would that entail?
So there are 75 fifth graders at West Street, and I'm not sure...
About 80.
Yeah, about the same.
About the same.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I too think it's a great opportunity for our students, anytime we can open their eyes to what's out there, and it's overnight with fifth graders. Good luck with that. But I'm sure, I know you can handle it.
Thank you. We will come back and tell you all about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Catarat.
Okay, moving along to, yeah, okay, moving along to new business, Budget Subcommittee Report.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop, for you. I took some notes yesterday. I will have a more formal report finalized by the end of the week. The school board had their first Budget Subcommittee meeting yesterday, on Tuesday, the 2nd, at 4:30. In attendance was Mr. Bishop, myself, the receiver, Seth, and Seth Racine, the business manager, and citizen Martina Shea. Mr. Bishop called the meeting to order at 4:30 PM. He welcomed, pointed out that it was the first Subcommittee meeting we've had since the state takeover, and we discussed the role of the committee. We were going to, for fiscal year 17, fiscal year 17, do some invoice summarizations. For fiscal year 18, review it, and mainly focus on fiscal year 19. The main role of the committee was to understand fiscal year 18 and to build the fiscal 19 budget alongside the receiver. Mr. Bishop asked if the current budget was within means. The receiver stated yes, tight, but living within our means. He, Mr. Bishop commented that this would be helpful for the eventuality of full school board independence, the necessity of these subcommittees. The receiver commented that good governance requires an understanding at all levels of what is happening and was happy to work with us. And then we got a presentation from Mr. Racine. The receiver has stated that he will send this, a copy of this presentation out to all the members of the committee, and I believe a copy will be available as well on the website and public record in some form.
Sure. I'll follow up on it. We'll post it publicly, but definitely to all the school committee members, no question.
Thank you. We just, we went over what the definitions of fiscal year were, how the fiscal year operates within the state of Massachusetts compared to at the federal level, the differences with that. We also, he gave us a fiscal year by fiscal year overview of what we were doing over the next four months pertaining to that fiscal year. With, for fiscal year 2017, we were, in July and August, we paid bills for what competed, completed at the end of June. As well as through September, we're going to be making those final grant budget payments, drawn downs, final amendments, before the end of the fiscal year. And in September and October of this year, we're going to be completing the end-of-year fiscal report to DESI. And for fiscal year 18, we're going to be, we opened the new fiscal year in July, and in August, received new grant awards. In both July and August, we bought goods and services for the start of the year, and we hired staff. For September and October, we are, and currently applying for grants and setting those grants up and reviewing any potential unforeseen costs. As well, now for fiscal year 2019, for September and October, we're now creating the budget development timeline, as well as for this, the month of October, project next year's costs based on data from the new school. For, we had a budget update as well. While we are closing out the last year's fiscal budget, we're also preparing for the fiscal year 19 budget. And the biggest obstacle we are going to be facing this year was the Old Southbridge Academy Charter School, which was approved by the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education in February 2017. I always say, opened in August with 160 students in the kindergarten to third grade, but will grow to 360 students from kindergarten to eighth grade, and there are approximately 68 students attending from the town of Southbridge this year. The rate at which each student will be charged, the school district will be $13,155 for a total assessment for fiscal year 2018 of $908,140, but we will be reimbursed by the state for $614,871. Now, it was also brought to the Subcommittee's attention that for the coming year, it is likely that the state will not reimburse us for current students attending, but will provide some sort of reimbursement for new students that leave the district to attend. This is, this was met to quite a dismay to the Subcommittee members. Both Mr. Bishop and I had questions pertaining to this development. I believe Mr. Bishop will speak to his question more thoroughly. But again, my question was, I believe, and Mr. Bishop's were pertaining to the costs and how it wasn't really sustainable for the district going forward to be losing this much money to an out-of-town charter school. So then he provided us, Mr. Racine provided us, an overview of the fiscal 2019 budget development timeline. In the month of November, we are, they are going to be finalizing priorities, and in December and January, they're going to be creating the fiscal 19-year plan, providing, in January, providing the town the fiscal year 19 allocations, while also during that time, training the principals about the budget. In February and March, they will create the fiscal year 19 budget documents that submit to the town. The Southbridge Public Schools will submit that and will out the budget allocations to the schools and departments. In March, they will share the fiscal year 19 budget plan with the school committee. The town will present the budget to the town council. And in April, they will review, the fiscal 19-year budget will be reviewed by the subcommittees. And during that time, both during March and April, they will support principals in the budget process as they work to finalize their plans. In April, May, and June, they will be implementing and support, implement and support stakeholders in this process, and they hope to have the fiscal year 19 budget approved by the town council and start implementing the school budget plans, hiring, purchasing, et cetera, which will be earlier in the process this year compared to what it was this last fiscal year, which didn't happen until, if I'm correct, July and August was the, when we started hiring. And that was the conclusion of that report from Mr. Racine. Looking over my notes. We discussed then the frequency of our meetings. We are planning to have one every couple of months, with our next one being at some point in December, and then having another one in the month of February as we start and have them more frequently going on from there, because that's when the budget season will get very intense. So that concludes my notes. Mr. Bishop, please feel free to add anything I have missed.
No, thank you for taking accurate notes and reporting out to the people at home and the people sitting here this evening what took place yesterday afternoon. Anybody have any questions of yesterday's meeting? Okay. Thank you. We're going to move on to 6B, Receiver Updates. Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Actually, I want to take us back to field trips, if you don't mind, just briefly. The, I appreciated the conversation that we had at our last meeting, where Mr. Hatch presented on his proposal to take students to Disney World in the spring of 2019. And, Mr. Bishop, you had concerns about the travel cost estimate. And again, this is why I want these discussions brought to the school committee. That was a good catch, an important thing to note. Mr. Hatch went back and asked the transportation company for a more accurate estimate, and it was, in fact, for a higher amount than he was able to show at that meeting. But he and the bus company were able to kind of work out a good timeline for making sure that the costs don't suddenly rise, so that we can keep it within means for the students who will be invited to go on this field trip. And with the advance notice that this isn't until the spring of 2019, they have plenty of time to prepare. So just enough gratitude for the conversations that we're having about field trips. So general announcements. I appreciate the work that the schools have underway right now to support the people in Puerto Rico who've experiencing the aftermath of Hurricane Maria. And so there are several different recovery efforts going on underway in the district right now. The middle and high school put their own activities in place to collect non-perishable items and personal care items. The schools in general, though, have partnered with the local Southbridge for Puerto Rico efforts, and they are also collecting items. So if you come into our schools, you should see boxes in the entryways to our schools where we're collecting perishable items, non-perishable items. And we've also begun to receive calls that we anticipate having some families coming here from Puerto Rico. This will be phenomenon experienced throughout Massachusetts this fall, as we anticipate that some families will want to get away from the island right now and enroll their children in our schools. So more to come on that. I think it'll be an important thing just for us all to, to watch and take note of. We had our full day of professional development last Friday. I was pleased to get around to see much of it across the district. The elementary level, we had, I thought, some very important professional development going on related to English Language Arts curriculum and also related to intervention and how we will support students in intervention in our schools, in our elementary schools. At the middle and high school, it was actually pretty exciting to see our middle and high school teachers working together by content area, to be working on how they will set up their assessments for this year and further develop their, their curriculum and their alignment of curriculum across grade levels. So it was great to see our teachers working very productively together and learning together in professional development. Our next day is October 20th. We are visiting schools on a regular basis and getting a chance to observe classrooms. So staff from the central office, including myself, have a regular schedule for being in schools. This week, I'll be at Charlton Street and the middle school, no, the high school, I'm sorry, Charlton Street on Thursday, the high school on Friday, so that we are regularly just getting a chance to work with the principals and the staff around our strengths and our challenges and continue to improve together. We are finalizing our school improvement plans. If you recall, I told you that this was an important element they were trying to bring to bear this year of the schools owning the improvement process instead of, you know, we have a turnaround plan for the district, but what does it mean for each and every school? And a requirement by law is that our, our school site councils are actually meeting and reviewing the plans. And so we set a deadline of the 29th of September, I do believe the deadline was, right around there. And the schools met the deadline, and were able to review their school improvement plans with parents from the community and get that approval, so that we have kind of a shared understanding of where each of the schools are going. As you recall, at our last meeting, we had Mr. Matt Brunel with us, asking questions about what you would like to see in the next receiver. In addition, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute, but we also asked our students at certain grade levels, our families, and our staff to respond to a survey to tell us about what their experiences are in our schools, as well as what they want to see in the next receiver. And that information, particularly on what they're experiencing in our schools, is useful baseline information, so we can continue to monitor our progress and see what kind of satisfaction, frankly, do we have with the educational services that we're providing to students. And so we're compiling those data right now and using it for baseline, as I said, and also for the selection of the next receiver. Mr. Bishop, I think I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Ms. Ryan.
I have a couple of questions. One, on that last point about the surveys, is there any way the school committee can get a summarization of what students were feeling and what they expressed overall as their chief, students, families, et cetera? Is there any way we can get a summarization of that as school committee members, so that way we know?
Certainly, that's a great idea for our next school committee meeting. I'd love to bring those data and share them with you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And my next question is, this is a wonderful piece of information. Going forward, though, I would really like it if it was included within our packet, so I'd have more time to review this, because there is a lot of information here, and there is questions that come up, but I would like to have more time next time to digest it. Obviously, there's things that happen that have to, you know, in a timely fashion that you can't provide beforehand, but a lot of these I'm going through could have been provided in our packet, so I'd really appreciate if they were included going forward.
Certainly. I hear your concern, and I'm one to not want to overpromise and underdeliver, and so let me take it under consideration and hopefully be able to respond to that, that good idea.
Okay, thank you.
As we move forward.
Before you go on, could I, could I ask, will the school improvement plans be online for each of the buildings?
It's a good question, actually. I hadn't considered it, and so let me think it through, but it makes sense that we would want to post our school improvement plans.
I would, I would recommend it.
Yep. Great. Also, just wanted to take a minute tonight to thank local organizations that have made important donations to our schools. And so at Charlton Street School, an appreciation to Nichols College for crayons, pencils, markers, paper, erasers, and other school supplies. Cornerstone Bank, a $200 donation for a musical presentation. Bombadil Key, celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. New Vision Church, $500 to purchase playground sports equipment. And the United Ways, using their breakfast event to ask each guest to bring in a sporting goods donation for our students. At West Street School, Harrington Physician Services and One Worcester Homes Realty provided a back-to-school backpack drive that included school supplies for the start of the school year. At Southbridge Middle High School, we have the, at both schools, the House of Destiny Church, at the start of the school year, catered a breakfast event for all teachers during the professional development week. I got to see it in action. I didn't have a chance to have a bite, but it was exciting, and the teachers felt very appreciated by that. Southbridge Academy, AA Transportation, our transportation company, is providing a bus once a week to transport a group of students to the YMCA during the school day, and they are not charging us for that transportation. And then district-wide, Elm Street Congregational Church has provided five boxes of school supplies to be used wherever they are needed the most. And in addition, AA Transportation has donated two buses for five hours for that new teacher orientation that we had back in August. I know more donations will be coming, and I'll be glad to continue to thank local organizations for their support of our public schools. Finally, I just want to come back to you with an update on the receiver search. As I mentioned, Mr. Brunel is finishing up those, the survey and compiling the data, as well as the last session that he had with staff was today. So he's finalizing the input that he's getting from various sources. He'll be providing that to us, and we will then soon be launching a, a full search with the posting of a, a job description, and we will be using the data that we get from him, that you all have provided, to post for the qualifications that we want for this position. So that's coming a little later in October. We've set a goal for ourselves of getting it up somewhere around October 11th. Again, not wanting to overpromise, but we, I think that I'll have a posting going up around October 11th and the process carrying forward from there. And, and then finally, the point to make about our mentoring and induction program for our, our new teachers is underway. It's an important component to make sure that they receive the, and support that they need as they get started in the district, as well as the hours that they need in order to advance their licensure. And so both components are included in our mentoring and induction program.
Can I ask you a question on the mentoring program? We have, last count, 70-plus new staff this year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Last year, we had about the same number.
Correct.
Who are we using for mentoring with, with this sizable number of new staff? Where are we getting the mentors?
Sure, sure. So the mentors are from within our district. So we, we posted, and we have staff who are working with us right now, who are vetted for that, and they are providing those types of supports. Sometimes it's not a one-to-one ratio, sometimes we have a mentor working with several new teachers to be able to provide them that experience.
I mean, it is, it is a sizable task to come up with that many mentors for so many new inexperienced staff. Any other questions for the receiver? Ms. Ryan.
At the last meeting, you had stated that, I believe, I could be wrong, but I remember one or two teaching staff positions being open at the beginning of the school year. Have you had any luck in filling those positions?
Certainly so. At the last meeting, I mentioned that we had a math teacher for Southbridge Academy. That position has been filled. I've interviewed that person, that gentleman, who will be starting with us momentarily, within the next few days. However, there are now other openings in the district, and we continue to work to fill them.
And what, do you remember offhand what positions were, that were open now?
Sure. So right now, we have posted for the director of Southbridge Academy, and we also have a posting for an elementary dual-language first-grade teacher as well. They come to mind. I apologize if there are others that aren't. I apologize if there are others that I have an exhaustive list on.
Mr. Thoma.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the receiver, do you have exit interviews if someone is leaving? Do you talk to them about why they're leaving? Or, do a lot of places have that type of?
Sure. So the individuals who, for example, the ones that I just mentioned, I've met with both individuals about their decisions right now and what's, you know, what's at stake right now. And so, it's something that we need to more formalize, but particularly as we begin this school year, as we get this school year underway, we are making sure that we have an understanding of why people might be leaving at this time.
Especially if they're going to another school district, you know, why they're going, what is it that, you know, the reasons why they are leaving, basically?
Yes, absolutely.
And maybe we can learn from that or do better.
Right.
If we need to do better. I know sometimes people leave not on their own, they just must be terminated for whatever reason, but I think, you know, some kind of a formal exit interview would be very useful for our system.
Certainly. Appreciate the comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Val.
With this problem that happened in Las Vegas, was there any kind of fallback or something in schools this week?
It's a good question. So, there actually wasn't anything that we specifically did in the schools. We wanted to make sure that we really maintain normalcy, is what we always want to do. We think that it's important for students to feel safe in our schools. However, one of the really important things that we've taken on this year is to make sure that we further emphasize safety in our schools. And so, all of our teachers were trained this year in just standard operating procedures for handling emergencies and multi-hazard crisis intervention in our schools. So how do we conduct a shelter-in-place? How do we conduct a lockdown? Where would we go if there was an evacuation? We've actually taken that to the students to make sure that they know what's happening. We've also informed the parents in writing, in Spanish and English, about what to expect in the schools this year, so that they're aware and can speak to their children about the importance of following directions when a command like a lockdown might come through. The other important thing is that we've teamed up with the police and the fire department around this, and this month we'll be conducting practice lockdowns in each of the schools that will be co-conducted by both the police department and the fire department and the school department. We don't want to say when, because we want to make sure that, that preparation is in place, so that schools are ready at any time, that they might need to, to be ready to go into lockdown or shelter-in-place. So it feels like a good team-up between the school department and the police department in particular around school safety.
Was there any, any things brought up by children today about the, you know, in school that maybe disturbed them or something? Did you get any kind of report about that?
You know, nothing has come to me, but it's a good question, and I'd certainly be, you know, mindful of anything that principals would also bring forward if they had concerns that they couldn't handle. I think that we have a very strong counseling staff, and I'm appreciative of the work that I know that they've been doing to support our kids during this challenging time.
I mean, it bothered me. I'm sure it might have bothered some of these younger kids, too.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for the receiver? All right. If not, we're going to move on to member forum. Any members have anything they'd like to bring forward this evening? Oh, did I miss something? Oh, excuse me. It's been a long day. Yes, New Business C, next meeting, Tuesday, November 14th, 2017, 7:00 PM in these chambers? I don't think we vote on that. It's just a statement of fact, I guess. Okay, now we can move on to members' forum. Any members have anything they'd like to bring forward this evening? Mr. Lozal.
Just a couple of quick, quick points. One, the budget subcommittee, if the meetings are at 4:30, I'd love to attend, but my job, my businesses don't allow me to do it at 4:30. Normally, we used to have subcommittees around 7:00, but something a little later would be better for me, but if not, carry on, I won't be attending. Just one other issue that I have that was brought to my attention by some alumni and some existing parents. There was a policy voted when we built the new high school that we redid the mascot, because everybody was putting in whatever mascot they wanted for a pioneer. And so, to stabilize what our pioneer looked like, we went back to 1960, recreated the pioneer, and that was the pioneer for the district, and we put it in the form of a policy with our school colors, because depending on the athletic director, it had blue, black, trim colors, and really, we are similar to Alabama, which is red and white. So to stop the constant, if an athletic director changes, or a coach, or a cheering squad coach, we tried to stabilize the colors and keep the tradition in place for the red and the white and the pioneer with the musket and the Daniel Boone Coonskin hat. That was done by the Hall of Fame Committee, the alumni, the existing students at that time. The policy was voted in, and since then, what we've had is we've had some turnover in the athletic director's position and some of the coaches, and it seems like when you see your cheerleaders come out in black uniforms or different colors than what we actually should have, I think, and I know we have a new athletic director. I have not met him yet. He's outreach, I just haven't met him, and I'd love to, because there's some history here that needs to be preserved for not only the past, but the future of Southbridge High School and Southern School System. It was put there by many other pioneers and would like to be upheld by the future pioneers. So I just would like to see the uniforms, instead of solid black cheering uniforms, it would be red and white. All the other schools keep their green and gold, green and white, or whatever they are. So I just wanted to bring it up. It's been a kind of a revolving door, so it's like nailing jello on a tree. It's not important who did what. It's if we can redraw the line and try and get ourselves back on track with that one issue, which we all know the educational portion is most important, but I think this has a lot to do with our pride and tradition at the middle high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lozal. Anyone else this evening?
Just a question.
Mr. Val.
Yeah. It came up before, but I, unfortunately, I haven't gotten the schedule for the football team this year. And did they schedule Tantasca? Is it scheduled?
Yes.
It is. Do you know the date by any chance?
I apologize, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lozal, do you know the date?
What was the question? I cannot hear.
The question is, when is the Southbridge Tantasca game?
That, fortunately, we almost didn't have a Tantasca game.
Right.
The athletic director that left said that there is, he didn't know it was that important, and really, we have the Ted Father Memorial Award, we have Bartlett and Tantasca, and all the rest of the schedule never mattered. But I want to say it is in two weeks. We're playing Millbury this week, and the following week, playing Tantasca.
Okay.
At Tantasca. Two years in a row. Why are you smiling, Jackie?
This brings back a lot of good memories. I mentioned Tantasca, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for the information, Mr. Lozal. Aficionado in the area of football for many years. Anyone else have anything? I have a couple things, as I always do, and I, I'm sorry. We had an important meeting two weeks ago in the library, and I was hoping that the receiver was going to include it in his, in his announcements. I believe the state representative called the meeting. I'm not exactly who called the meeting, but we had a meeting on a Thursday morning down in the, one of the rooms at the library, and it consisted of the state representative, our state senator, Dr. Johnston, several members from the DESI staff, myself, Dr. Page, the chairman of the town council, as well as the town manager. I'm trying to think if I've left any other people out of that. And it was, it was a candid discussion about the receivers used a good part of the time to bring those folks involved up to date as to what's been taking place in the district since he's come. But then, it whittled down at the end to, I'll have to say, the elephant in the room. It was alluded to briefly by Ms. Ryan this evening, that we talked about during our, during our budget subcommittee, and that is the fiscal hardships which we are facing based on the opening of a charter school three miles off our shore. The numbers are severe. We're going to get by this year with about a $300,000 net loss to the district. That number, from what I can see, based on, you know, and again, I'm not a mathematician, but I am fairly fiscally responsible, I think we're looking in the area of probably a million dollars that we're going to lose out of our district budget for that school. That's alarming, but what's more alarming is a couple articles I read this past two weeks in the Boston Globe by, I think it's James, I can't think of his name, regarding the chairman of the Board of the Department of Education, Paul Sagan, and his financial contributions to organizations trying to establish more charter schools in our Commonwealth. The state voting commission has committed fines, not Mr. Sagan, but the organizations that he donated to, to quite a hefty fine. I think it's probably two and a half times larger than any fines that have been levied.
$500,000, if I remember correctly.
Thank you, I read the article. This is alarming to me. It should be alarming to every citizen. When we had the gentleman here looking, just asking what we were looking for in our next receiver, my number-one answer was ethics. My number-one answer is ethics always, and I'm really questioning the ethics that allow the chairman of the Board of Public Education for this Commonwealth. And I guess it's a free country, but I'm really alarmed and disturbed that this took place, and this is the mindset of the individual who oversees this Commonwealth schools. It's my personal views. I have been in contact with the Boston Globe. I will be continuing to communicate back and forth with them, and I'm going to share information that I have with them, because this is an unfortunate circumstance for our district. We cannot afford to have a charter school this close to a Level 5 district. Shame on the Department of Education for doing that to us. Shame on them. We're fighting our tails off to bring this district back, and they're throwing a grenade like that at us. It's just unconscionable in my eyes. That's what I'd like to say this evening. I hope everybody has a great Columbus Day, want to see all the sporting events, and I think, go ahead.
One comment. I agree wholeheartedly with what you're saying regarding the charter schools, but the fact is that it's here, now it's up to us to decide how we're going to compete against them. I mean, we need some kind of a plan on how to compete against them, very simply. I think one way to do it is to come up with programs like this.
Mr. Thoma.
We're going to have to need a plan, but I agree with what you're saying. It's going to get worse. They're going to add a grade every year, and if we're not going to compete, we're going to be out.
Mr. Lozal.
And that kind of money, our constituents are going to be very upset when they, when they actually see this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I, I wasn't going to comment on it. The charter school debate continues. Southbridge is in dire straits, and it fell even further behind in the past year. Again, you have a state government with a state agency, Department of Education, a governor that did a state of the state and said, everything's fine in Southbridge. When you go on that side of 128, ethics are thin, and the knowledge of what goes on on the ground out here, the western, but east, central, western part of the state, is probably next to nothing. I say, thank God we have Russell Johnson. I think that when he landed here, I would rather see him stay here than find somebody else. But of course, I think he should be the commissioner of education, somebody that actually can listen, can come up with a plan. The State Department of Education didn't come up with a plan by having a Level 5 district and start putting charter schools and everything. I mean, they're fighting themselves. They fight to turn around with the charter school, and it lacks the master plan from the top. So I'm not saying, I mean, if people like charter schools, it's fine, but when you turn around and look at the tax dollars that are being spent in the Southbridge school system to fail, I shouldn't say fail, but not go to a Level 5 in some areas, I think, you know, again, I always go out there on the elementary level, say we're heading in the right direction, and I think we have to work harder at the middle high school. But again, when you lay out a plan to build something, you build it from the foundation up. I think what the state has done is they basically cracked the foundation, said, keep going Southbridge, but we're going to do this, this, and this, and then donate to it the way they did that ethically, I mean, it's just wrong. But again, the further you get away from the people as you go up in government, as state rep, state senator, or federal, you are, you have less, how do I say, feet on the ground where you actually know what's going on on the ground. I think I had a great conversation with Russ Johnson, and he said, I would never know what I know if I didn't come here and sit at this desk. And there was a lot to learn, because there's a lot of ballyhoo buildup, politics, you know, this one doesn't like that one, but what about the kids? What about our employees? And I think he's focused on that, and I think we have to turn around not only a district, but we have to turn around what happened in the last year. Nothing's impossible. I agree with Spirit Thomo, that you're going to have to compete harder now than you ever had to compete. Now, if you're a competitor, you look forward to the challenge. That's what I do. But if you're going to sit back and just let the charter school roll over us, then shame on us. But again, I am cautiously optimistic about what's going on in this district. I am very concerned about the budgetary items that we're dealing with and wages at the top. Is it sustainable? That's the reason why I wanted to be involved in the budget. It's not so much, hey, let's make sure we have enough money for this year. I'm looking for the long-term sustainability where this town can afford to do this correctly and, and move forward and keep when they hand it off, not just hand it off, okay, we cut everything out and we go back the other way. There's a lot of work ahead, but again, I share the frustration of the chair with this charter school being put right in our backyard. I really do have a problem with that at this time. Bad timing. Thank you.
Ms. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, I would also like to express my unhappy feelings about this charter school. I have been talking about what this charter school was going to do for the last two to three years, since the idea of putting a charter school in those two villages came up. When I sat on Tantasca, I was the only member there to talk about what this was going to wreak, what havoc this was going to wreak in the region. I went to, along with school committee member Peliquin, went to the first open forum meeting with the state over this, and we were the only two school communists at the time to speak out against this, because we saw what was going to come. We saw the damn fiscal damages it was going to wreak. And now we're looking here, all of us here, like, oh, look, we're losing almost a million dollars this year. We're getting reimbursed only, we're getting reimbursed about two-thirds, but next year, we're not going to get reimbursed almost squat. Like, we're sitting here, like, this is what happens when you allow private entities like this to compete with public schools and then don't actually have a sustainable funding formula at the state level. This is what has happened. And now, we're, we as a district, when we're already having struggles, when we're already Level 5 and having a hard time trying to figure out where we're going to put funds to make sure our students succeed, I now could even have a harder time. I'm extremely frustrated by this and extremely saddened by the lack of, the reason, I mean, the first time it was denied was because they had just gone into receivership, and they didn't want to risk the instability of this region. And then the second year, we're in receivership, they go ahead and do it anyways. I wish I could say I didn't see this coming, but we all saw this coming, and now we're facing the damages of it.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Anybody else have anything? I do want to say that town manager did send a letter to our state rep and our state senator today. We were able, I think all of us should have received a copy from Dr. Johnson's office. The letter was articulating pretty much what we've said here today. So I just want to let the taxpayers know, and we're going to keep fighting for you. We're going to keep fighting to make our schools good. There's not a person up here being paid. There's not a person here, I don't think, that has children in the school system. So we're here because we believe in our school system. Many of us have been involved for a long time, and we believe in our community. We're not going anywhere. We're going to stay here and fight. Okay, anybody else have anything before I sign off? Mr. Dr. Page?
Yeah. I just want to voice a couple of concerns or opinions that I have about the charter system in general. And that is that if you go and read what the mantra is of a charter school system, it doesn't read any differently than what the mantra is that DESI tells us that a school system should read. So why set up publicly funded? So why set up publicly-funded competing institutions to compete with one another? I just don't understand the philosophy. And so if there is an issue with underperformance, which we have and we acknowledge and we've issued, and we acknowledge that we have that, and the state has come in and said, we're going to help you fix it, how do they help you fix it by setting up another publicly-funded district or another publicly-funded institution for education that is going to compete with you with the same stated goals as what they want for education? That's, that's my current read on the thing, and I would welcome comments, and I would like somebody to explain to me otherwise as to why this is a good thing for the, for the public in terms of receiving an education funded by the public. So that's, that's really what I want to say about that subject. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before we take a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Second.
Second. All favor? Thank you. See you next month.